All right, please take your seats. Thank you. All right. I'd like to call to order this committee of the whole, Champaign County Board, Tuesday, September 9th at 6:32 PM. I'd like a roll call, please.
Here.
Burksen. Carter. Coort. Esri.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Hartke.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kibler. Langenheim.
He's here.
Okay. Maxwell.
Here.
McGuire.
Present.
Michaels.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Petrie.
Here.
Quisenberry.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
Rosales.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Kurtz.
I'm sorry.
Kurtz.
Oh, that's me. All right, here. We have a quorum. I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes, August 12th, 2014. Max, Stan. Any changes to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like a motion for approval of agenda addenda, please. Motion, please. I got John and I got Geraldo. There will be one change. There's no, as I've been informed, no closed session tonight, so strike that from your agenda and for last item. And are there any other changes to the agenda? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public participation. We have one, as I can see, and it's quite a quiet crowd out there, not very excited. Well, we got Dan. All right, hi, Dan. Hi, and John. Becky Evelyn, is that how you pronounce it? Please, you want to step up to our hot seat, right there in the front? Press the button on the microphone, please, and you have five minutes to make a statement.
You're in the middle?
Yeah, that's fine. Just pull it towards you.
Okay.
Hi.
Well, my name is Becky Evelyn. I live at 405 Sunrise Drive in Urbana. I live just right outside of the city limits of Urbana. I currently have chickens, a lot of chickens, that live next door to me. I am currently very frustrated by them. I've had to call the animal control several times. They currently fly into my yard, they jump into my yard. I currently have animal droppings in my yard. I do not have animals for a reason because I do not want animals. I am allergic, so is my daughter, two dogs and cats, and my daughter is asthmatic. So therefore, I do not want animals in my yard. I therefore do not want my neighbors' animals in my yard. I feel like I have no recourse whatsoever to get these animals and to keep them out of my yard. I've asked my neighbors several times to come and get them out of my yard, and I just feel like there is no legal source that I can have. It seems like when I call the animal control, they do not know where to turn to. They tell me I need to call the county because when this happens, it's generally before 8:00 AM, so therefore, a police officer has to come out, and I don't feel like that is a police officer's job to have to come out and deal with chickens that are in my yard. The one that came out to my house this morning, unfortunately, there is no referendum on chickens. There's just on nuisance for cats and dogs, so therefore, you can't give tickets for chickens being in your yard due to the fact that they're livestock. I have these in my yard daily, and I would just like to see some help, some kind of resource for me and my neighbors that actually live outside in the county limits but do not live in the country. If I lived in the country and if I had a mile in between me and a farm, I would not care if my fellow neighbor had animals or livestock or whatever, but these people are literally probably three feet away from me, from my house to their house, and it is very annoying when you come home every day, when you wake up in the morning and you have chickens crowing in your backyard and roosters. They currently have seven roosters in their backyard. I would like to see something of an ordinance or something like Champaign and Urbana has that limits how many chickens or roosters that the county has per square foot of your yard. My yard is twice the size of theirs, and I can tell you that they have probably over 40 animals in their backyard, and that includes ducks and chickens, including roosters. I did take a video of them, if any of you would like to see it. When I came home this afternoon from work, I had three of them in my yard, and you can plainly hear and see them clucking and chirping in my backyard. I don't know if I'm allowed to do that or not. This is my first time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? I don't see anybody. Is there anyone else who has, would like to participate this evening in our public forum? No? Okay, I'm closing public participation communications from the floor and the board. Any communications? All right, I have one. We want to congratulate John Dwyer and the Champaign County Emergency Management Agency. They have received and been accepted as the Weather Ready Nation Ambassador from the National Weather Service for extreme storm weather program preparedness. So that's a very exciting award that our EMA and this morning, we had a four-hour training with more than 150 of first responders and from around the county on a hypothetical tornado through the University of Illinois and Parkland College, which went off, I thought, very, very well, and we're hopefully now prepared, as we were, for gifford for any future situations of that nature. So since any more communications, we'll move on to Astrid. Welcome back, Astrid, and congratulations. Her son was married in Israel over these past few weeks, and she's been away and did not bring back any medals of honor or fighting medals that I know of, but here she is.
Nice and safe there. True program, is someone here to give a report?
No, it was just, it was available.
Oh, okay. In that case, anyone want to move that these?
Yeah. Stan.
Motion to place on file, except all reports as listed.
Any discussion? Yeah?
Yeah, I may be misremembering this, but I thought we were going to have someone from community elements come and talk about their initial report.
I'm sorry, Deb, I can't do it.
I'm sorry, they're not here this evening. If you would like them to be at the county board meeting this month, we could ask if they could be there then, otherwise, we could ask if they could be here at the next Cal.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you, Astrid. One more. Send me our review.
Oh.
Closed session.
Okay. So if somebody moves? Need a motion to?
I move that we go along with the state's attorney's advice and it sounds like maintain the status quo with relations to our closed session minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you, Astrid. All right, let's move on. Policy and personnel, and that's James.
Keep forgetting the gavel.
Yes, I didn't bring the gavel. I know that, it just kills you that I don't bring the gavel, James. I promise within the next couple of months, I'll bring the gavel.
First thing on policy, personnel, and appointments is Section A, the county clerk section. I would entertain a motion first to accept and place on file the August 2014 report. Moved by Mr. Jay, seconded by Mr. McGuire. Gordy is here tonight. Does anybody have any questions about the report? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. That passed unanimously. Next, we have a resolution to provide licensing of poker runs. I'd entertain a motion so we can start talking about it. Mr. Mitchell, seconded by Mr. Maxwell. Discussion. Mr. James.
I know that, you know, in our town, that a lot of the motorcycle groups get together, they have poker runs and what have you. I didn't read all this, but is it just another way to collect the fee off a group of people trying to do a good thing and serve in their community? Or is there a dire need that we start licensing this type of activity?
I don't know if there's a dire need, but there was a state statute change a few years back that defined this in more detail, and this is what we need to do to really officially allow what the state statute allows. Deb or Gordy, do you have any more details than that?
Excuse me. There's a new state law passed during this spring legislative session that exempts poker runs from county-level raffle ordinances. Previously, poker runs in Champaign County had sort of been ambiguously covered by the county's raffle ordinance, at least those folks who were kind enough to bring poker runs to our attention would apply for a county raffle license. The new state law explicitly states that counties may license poker runs separately from raffles. After discussing it with the county administrator and the state's attorney, it was sort of the consensus to draft a resolution licensing poker runs nearly identically to how we license raffles and to bring it to you for consideration. It is entirely up to you whether or not poker runs are something you would like to license in a manner that is almost entirely analogous to how we license raffles that are conducted in the unincorporated areas.
And is it pretty safe to say that we'll have compliance similar to what we had when we had them under raffles?
Correct. In the months since the legislature passed the law allowing for the licensing of poker runs and the consideration of this ordinance by this board, we've had two inquiries as to whether or not the county licenses poker runs. As you can imagine, the organizations that put these on are relatively close-knit. They have statewide organizations, they share information back and forth, and so when the abate group of Champaign County wants to do a poker run, they know to call us and ask if we have a license, and right now, we tell them, "Sorry, we don't." Go do what you do.
Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know other counties surrounding us are looking into this also. Today's Decatur Herald had a front-page story on their change, how they want to license things also, so this would not be something out of the ordinary. This is something I think all the counties are probably going to do, and they're looking to streamline it too for Macon County.
Mr. Langenheim.
If we decline to license the poker runs, does that mean they can't hold them here?
I think it means it's just as likely that they'll hold them or not as it was when they were covered under raffles.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Petrie.
This question is either for Mr. Holton or Ms. Bucy. If the statute reads "may," can you help me appreciate why the state's attorney and administrator thinks this is important to set up as a separate resolution?
Well, speaking only for myself, I can tell you that the current resolution and licensing process we have for raffles does not cover poker runs under the new state law. So it's up to this board whether or not you'd like to license poker runs, and if you would, this would be a framework to do it that's very similar to the way that we license raffles. Poker runs are somewhat analogous to raffles, but different enough that the state legislature decided that one license process could not apply to both. I'm neither advocating that you do this nor advocating against it, just bringing it to you in case it's something you want to do.
Mr. McGuire.
I suggest we don't always have to regulate things.
Mr. James.
I guess I would ask, by doing the licensing, what does that, does that mean that we go out and officially check to make sure they're doing as they're saying for that $25, if that's what the fee is to be, or, I mean, I don't understand why they've got to have a license when they've been doing it for years. I know things progress, but when I'm reading this, I'm thinking, well, if you're going to charge somebody a fee to tell them, "Yes, you can do this," there has to be some type of rules, regulations, or parameters they need to follow within that, so is that something that is overseen by the person issuing the license or the office?
We ask them to provide some information to us on the front side, much as we do with raffles. Do we spot-check raffles to make sure that the people who are conducting raffles actually are following the rules that they provide to us for every raffle? We do not. I apologize.
Well, I guess I would just say then, that's some money that basically is coming in just to pay for a piece of paper that may or may not legitimately do anything for the good of the community, so I would say we really don't need it at this point.
Mr. Alex.
I agree with Mr. James.
Mr. Jay.
I think it's also noteworthy that a lot of the poker runs are for charities.
I will point out that most raffles are for charities as well. Mr. Schrader.
Second round, thanks.
Yeah. Now, we're beyond that at this point.
I know it's a fee, it's a small fee. I think it legitimizes, if you want to call them raffles, if you want to call them, they're not going to obviously be raffles, but a charity, as opposed to someone who just, you can get a band of motorcycle guys running around and claim that they're doing a charity. Once again, I agree, Stan, with your assessment that we don't go out and check on these things, but at least when you get and apply for a permit, you're legitimate, and people recognize that. So whether or not cuts back on illegitimacy out there, just from the standpoint of something more sinister or corrupt, someone's trying to, you know, actually exploit people for charity that's not there, where this would be an actual charity and there's people responsible for it, so I'll support it.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I'm going to ask for division myself, because I couldn't tell. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. That looks like it fails. Is that correct?
What was that?
Eight to 11. It's like eight. Can that be right? Yeah. Yeah, okay. No, I don't. I'm just going to say it failed. All right. Next, we move on to job content evaluation. We have a couple of things back from our committee. The first item is about a problem-solving court coordinator. Entertainer motion to act on the recommendation from the committee.
So moved.
Mr. Kurtz, moves.
Second.
Mr. Alex, second. Deb, would you like to give a brief summary of what happened with this?
Well, as you are aware, this is a new position for county government, so the courts presented a job description and questionnaire that was completed. We met with Mr. Holland to review the parameters and requirements for this position and have resulted in a recommendation that this position, if created by the county board, be assigned to grade range I, and this would be effective January 1st, 2015. The job description is in your packet for your information.
Mr. Alex, I saw your hand up first.
Thank you. I wanted to confirm, Deb, this is a, being proposed as a new county position, but this is a function that was previously performed by a contracted agency. Is that correct?
That's correct. As you will probably recall, there was originally a grant for this position for two years, which ended in March of 2014. The county board elected to fund this position from the public safety sales tax from April through December of this year. This assumes the continuation, and when we looked at maintaining the position as a contract position with Prairie Center or bringing the position in-house, it was actually less expensive for us to bring the position in-house than to have it at Prairie Center.
This is in fact the drug court position, as we called it when we budgeted last year.
Originally, that's what it was called, yes.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Schwartz, I saw your hand up.
I'm sorry, Ms. Schwartz, if I could follow up.
Yep.
This is in fact, what this person is primarily going to be doing is the drug court, right?
Yes. We also, with the budget process, are moving the drug court fund to be administered by the courts instead of by the mental health board, because it's really all reporting directly to the courts at this point, and in establishing this, the courts also recommended that we rename it to Problem Solving Courts Fund and Problem Solving Courts Coordinator, because if the court at some point should determine to add a mental health court or a veterans' court, it would all still come under the jurisdiction of this fund, and responsibilities might be added to this position if that should happen to be done.
No problem, Mr. Alex. Ms. Schwartz.
I know it's sort of somewhere between here and finance, so I apologize, but we're creating a position that may or may not be funded, and I definitely fully support funding it, but at least the memo we got from Mr. Alex suggested that we don't have money, and he would recommend rejecting all possible or all requests for additional funding. So I know that we'll talk about when we get to finance, I just want to mention that by approving this, we haven't really approved the position, because until it's funded, there is no such thing, so I'm not really sure what we're approving.
Well, first of all, under the personnel policy, the Personnel Committee of the whole has to first approve the recommendation of the Job Content Evaluation Committee and forward it to the Finance Committee. So this is also on the finance agenda. Only the Finance Committee can actually add or approve a staffing budget position. But I would also add that because it is status quo, the funding for this position is in the public safety sales tax budget as it has been presented to you at this point for fiscal 2015.
Okay, Mr. Alex, did you want to comment on that?
I know Ms. Bucy said what I thought she was going to say, which is this is in the draft budget. Now, we can, we could always take it out, in which case, the position would go away, but currently, the, my comment about no new funding requests, I was not considering this a new funding request because it was money that we spent out of public safety sales tax last year, we just spent it to Prairie Center as opposed to as a salary line.
Well, not to split hairs there, but we did spend, we only funded, I forgot what, however many months.
Because it was for nine months.
Right, so we can still consider that a status quo?
Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you. As a position, this was an integral part of, and has been, of the drug court. This officer was, has done untold good in helping those who are to graduate the drug court and become upstanding citizens of our community, and the Steering Committee, Drug Court Steering Committee, which is now called Problem Solving, has agreed that this position is of extremely, extreme importance to this program.
Mr. James.
I have a few comments. First of all, when it comes to grant money, I know Rantoul, there were several officers that were hired with federal funds, and it was grant money, and I think there was four of them, and when the grant starts running out, you have to start allowing employees going, that becomes a hard thing to do because of the connections and that. But with that said, I can't support any new positions or funding at this time, knowing that, you know, as we've been hearing for two or three years now, our buildings need some updating, they've been let go for many, many, many years. I know there's a lot of good things out there. Any of us that have children or family members that live near us, they always need something, want something, but, you know, the bottom line is, we can only do so much, and it's hard to say no. And when I look at this position, and it was grant money and then the funding on it, sometimes we just got to tighten our shoes up a little bit more and march on, and no one likes to hear that, but if we don't take care of the things we do have, we're just sliding down that path and we're never going to come back, and just three or four years ago, we were asking employees and everybody to take layoffs and vacation time or whatever how we were dealing with it, and when I see extra money, I think that's time that, you know, we need to look at those positions and make sure that we've well compensated those that have given back to us, so I won't be supporting this position.
All right, Ms. Schwartz, round two.
Again, this will be later on in finance, because we're going to vote on it now, just to bring it up. If we vote to refund the bonds, we're going to have a saving of, whatever, $200 and something thousand dollars from public safety sales tax, which could fund this but cannot find maintenance, so.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I'm going to call for division again.
I'll call for roll call.
Second? Okay, let's, let's do a roll call on this one.
Alex.
Yes.
Burksen.
Here.
Coort.
No.
Esri.
No.
Harper.
No.
Hartke.
Yes.
James.
No.
Jay.
No.
Kurtz.
Yes.
Langenheim.
Yes.
Maxwell.
No.
McGuire.
Yes.
Michaels.
No.
Mitchell.
No.
Petrie.
No.
Richards.
Yes.
Rosales.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
I have 11 to 10.
11 to 9. 11 to 9, cast.
That motion passes. Moving along, we have a recommendation for the, from, for the position of senior planner in planning and zoning. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Alex. Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Deb, again, could you give a brief recap of the results of this?
This position was brought to you through request of Mr. Hall, the Director of Planning and Zoning. He has, as you are aware, over the past several months, had a senior planner from RPC working part-time in capacity to provide assistance to his office, and in doing this, it has been determined and noted that the responsibilities for the second planner, there are only two, the Director of Planning and Zoning, and this recommended senior planner position, that the real responsibilities and total scope and impact that this department, this position has on the development and implementation of long-term planning on zoning issues and initiatives for Champaign County warranted that it be updated to indicate that there was greater requirements, particularly in skill and knowledge, for this position to effectively carry out the responsibilities of the job. In light of that, the Job Content Evaluation Committee recommends realigning this position by renaming it Senior Planner and assigning it to Grade K. The proposed job description is also in your packet.
All right, any discussion or questions? Ms. Petrie.
My question applies to this, but it also leaks over to the second description that we're going to be discussing, and the point of my reflection has to do with the description of education and experience under the Associate Planner. When I compare that to the same under the Director of Planning, I have concerns that the description under the Director of Planning does not have as much strength in description and expectation, except for the year difference of three to five, as the one for Associate Planner, and wondered if maybe it is important enough for a revisit of that description under education experience for the Director of Planning.
So the Democrats discussed this a little bit in caucus, and my interpretation of the situation is that because we're actually looking for one of these jobs, for a Director, that, that detail probably represents what it was when Mr. Hall was, was hired a few years ago. So I, personally, I'm not concerned that that be taken up until such a time that we're actually looking to fill that position. I would ask Deb if you, if you have an opinion on that as well.
Well, I'm not exactly, I...
I assume you're referring to the position description. Is that correct?
Specifically focusing on the, the education experience criteria.
And, and as I read this, as somebody in this field, I would see more weight and expectation
under this description under the Associate Planner than I do read under the Plan, Director of Planning, except for the three to five-year differential.
Oh, just the way the master's degree is written? Is that what you're referring to? Because they both say master's degree.
I know, but they are entirely...
Yeah, and that's probably an error. That probably just needs to be corrected.
Okay.
That it should be the same master's degree requirements for both positions.
If that gets done, then I can be comfortable with it.
I think that's exactly right.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to take an action to correct that, or can that?
No, we will just correct it.
That's an administrative change. Okay. Any further questions or discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That motion passes. Moving on, the next item is the recommendation for changes to the classification for Director as a result of the review of Senior, or Director of Planning as a result of the review of Senior Planner, and I would entertain a motion. Mr. Esri, moves.
Second.
Astrid, seconds. Any discussion? Did we cover all that well enough? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That motion passed as well. Next section, we are at the County Administrator section, and what we have there is a report where I need a motion to accept and place on file the August 2014 report.
So moved.
Mr. Richards moved, Mr. James second. Any questions for Deb on this report? Ms. Petrie.
I'm getting it. On page 55, Turnover Report, would it give us any significant or worthwhile information if there was a column that listed the reasons for leaving? In other words, do they retire, do they move on to another job or anything like that? That would be useful for us.
It probably would, and we could work on that. We don't always get that information, but it's something that we could try to identify.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion passed unanimously. And finally, from the Chair's Report, the Strategic Planning Committee is, did receive a little bit of feedback on the, on the mission and vision and values, and they met and started to work on that. There's probably some more wordsmithing that needs to go on for that portion. I wanted to call your attention tonight to the goals and objectives that were shared with you from the previous strategic plan, and I would invite you, if you have goals or objectives that go with the current goals, that you would like to suggest, I would, I would like to have those, so the Strategic Planning Committee can take those into account as we review those, as we move forward with a refresh of the strategic plan. My intent is to, as we get initiatives and goals together, that we have a study session in the future where those goals and initiatives are put out in front of folks, and people have an opportunity to speak to these initiatives and speak for them, and then we go through an exercise in that same study session of ranking the goals and initiatives to make sure that we have things that are of strategic value to the board as a whole in our strategic plan. I don't know exactly how that timeline is going to roll out. I was hoping we would get that done by November. I'm not completely confident that we will get that far, but we will, we will try. I am, I am going to use this opportunity to say that I, I think it's kind of silly to have an ordinance on the book for raffles, and not an ordinance on the book for something that's like a raffle, but state law says is not a raffle, so you have to have a different license. So I'm hoping, Mr. James, that you're going to come back next month with a request to remove the raffle ordinance from the books, because to have one and not have the other, I just don't understand it. I think you're just being contrary. Thank you.
I'd probably remove, I'd probably remove raffle and bingo.
For consent agenda, I have nothing.
Close session minutes.
Oh, and I would entertain a motion that we keep our closed session minutes from this, from policy, closed. Mr. Rosales, seconded by Mr. Richards, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That's all from policy.
Thank you, James. Let's move on, Chris. Come on down.
Our first item is, as usual, the Treasures Report. And as usual, we welcome Mr. Welch.
Nice to be here. I just wanted to briefly give you an update on real estate taxation. Second installment was September 2nd, and as of today, after business tonight, we're 97% collected. We've been a little bit ahead all entire year, so it's, it's been a very smooth year so far. Last date to pay will be October 23rd, with the tax sale occurring on October 24th. Other than that, that's all I really wanted to report, so I just asked if my report be accepted and placed on file, please.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Quisenberry, seconded by Mr. Kurtz. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Petrie.
Hi.
Hi.
I have a question. If you run any data for what you might project, the increase that we would potentially be receiving in property tax for 2015, like 10% increase, 2%, 1%?
Yeah, I, I don't know percentage-wise, but I think the average over the last 40 years has been about $6 million from one year to the next. That's an average. We're 303 this, this time, 303 million. I'm just, I was projecting in my budget, I said 310 million probably for next year, but that's just a guess. I don't have any more than just a guess at it, just historically speaking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The auditor could not be in attendance tonight, so I would simply entertain a motion that we accept the auditor's report, place it on file, Mr. James and Mr. Harper. Any discussion regarding the auditor's report? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to the nursing home. Our first item is Item C1, Resolution Regarding Charges for Services at the Champaign County Nursing Home, included in the packet. May I have a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Mr. Langenheim, may I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Maxwell. Discussions, questions? Mr. McGuire.
Was there some discussion last time about some comparisons for other nursing homes that were in the area? And, are there none? None available.
Mr. Hartke or Mr. Maxwell, do you want to speak to what the Board of Directors did?
The Board of Directors made this recommendation. Whether or not we had a set of surrounding homes, how much they're charging, I'm not sure. I don't believe, I don't recall it being presented. Yes, we did. We did, okay. But I know that we are under some of these existing, at least one of the existing facilities in town, and maybe more than one. Thank you.
Mr. Hartke, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, when we, when we looked at this, at this raise in price, it, we compare not only to similar facilities, county facilities around the state, but facilities within the area and what their prices were. Clark Lindsay, of course, the local Manor home, was much more expensive than us, but for those that provide, that have similar quality, in fact, we have a higher quality rating than most of them that are charging similar prices. I can't quote those direct numbers to you, but they have been in, in the management reports, and we dealt with those directly when we looked at this raise.
Thank you. Ms. Schwartz, did you have something? Okay, thank you. Mr. McGuire, did you follow up, or did that answer your question? I can't hear you.
So they have been in the management reports? I should be able to find them? Okay, thank you.
Any, Ms. Petrie.
My no vote does not mean lack of support, but there's a clarification. I want to be able to contact Mr. Gima on before I, a final vote on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I heard a couple of no's there, so that motion carries. We'll move on to the Nursing Home Monthly Report, which is included in the packet. Any comments from Mr. Hartke or Mr. Maxwell, or questions thereto? Let's see, Mr. Maxwell.
I'd like to make a small, minor corrections to my report. I didn't have all the facts together in order to complete it thoroughly, so the motion to accept the minutes was made by Hodson, and also the, I estimated the adjournment time is 7:35, and in fact, it was 7:40. Thank you.
Thank you. I may have a motion to accept the report and place it on file.
So moved.
Mr. Kurtz, and anyone want to second that? Mr. Esri, any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to Item D1. This is a motion to accept the recommendation for employee health insurance and related benefit plans from fiscal year 2015 from the Labor Management Health Insurance Committee. May I have a motion? I'm sorry, a little louder. Ms. Burksen, second. Ms. Petrie, any discussion? Ms. Petrie.
Maybe I missed this, and it's in our packet, but my question is, what do you calculate the additional cost above the 2014 cost in 2015 for the increase that the county will be paying?
Ms. Busey.
Well, that depends on the employee group, but those calculations, overall, the health insurance overall increase is 5%. But most employees will be contributing a larger portion towards the employee coverage pursuant to collective bargaining agreements that we have negotiated, and you have in your packet tonight also the designated designation for non-bargaining employee contributions. Does that answer your...
Wondering about the increase from $30 to $50 per month that the county was putting in. Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Item E, these are recommendations from the Job Content Evaluation Committee. This should be pretty easy, because we talked about these under policy. We'll start with the Problem Solving Court Coordinator. May I have a motion? Mr. Kurtz, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schrader. Discussion? I'm guessing we're probably going to want a roll call on this, so I might as well call for it straight up. Anybody want to join me?
Second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Coort.
Yes.
Esri.
Yes.
Harper.
No.
Hartke.
Yes.
James.
No.
Jay.
No.
Kurtz.
Yes.
Langenheim.
Yes.
Maxwell.
No.
McGuire.
Yes.
Michaels.
No.
Mitchell.
No.
Petrie.
No.
Quisenberry.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rosales.
Yes.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Alex.
Yes. I've got 13 to 7, if I counted right. Okay, that motion carries. Next, we'll do the recommendation from Job Content Evaluation Committee for the Planner. This is, I guess this is technically the Senior Planner position. May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Kurtz. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. And finally, the J C E C recommendation for the Director of Planning and Zoning. May I have a motion? Mr. Esri, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kurtz, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. And finally, the J C E C recommendation for the Director of Planning and Zoning. May I have a motion? Mr. Esri, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kurtz, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. And we'll move on to the County Administrator.
The General Corporate Fund reports are at your desks this evening. You will note that on the projection for revenue, we continue to see a decline on non-business licenses and permits, which is revenue stamps, which is a reflection of the real estate market, not coming in as high as what we had projected for this year, a deficit of about $344,000. We're looking at penalties on taxes coming in at about $135,000 less than what we have budgeted, which is tracking just slightly below what the actual was for last year. The quarter cent sales tax, well, the one cent sales tax is up. It's very healthy this year. It's performing extremely well. The quarter cent sales tax is effectively flat, so it shows a negative $34,096. But if you look at the projection, you'll see it's still higher, but very, not by much, than the 13-month period for fiscal 2013. Going down then, the most other notable item is fees revenue, where there's a $952,000 below what we projected for, for this year. The fees are down, as you know that. You heard in a budget presentation that the rental housing support fee is completely not be, going into the budget this year because of an issue with a lawsuit. It's being escrowed, and that's about $200,000 of that $952,000. But the rest of it is just from a slowdown in collection of fees throughout all of our systems, over what we had anticipated after we budgeted for fee increases. That's part of it, too, is just seeing the reality of the fee increases that were approved for fiscal '14 as opposed to what we anticipated before they went into effect. So overall, revenue looks like it's going to come in at about 97.5%, almost $1 million under what was budgeted. Expenditure, overall, looks like it's going to come in right at about 98%, about $780,000 under what was budgeted. Personnel, actual salaries are, are being underspent. Overtime and fringes are right, well, health insurance is the fringe benefit, and it looks very close to what was budgeted for this year. Most of commodities are expected to, to be underspent this year. Utilities, gas service, we actually expect gas and electric to balance out. Gas service is higher because of the winter that we had last winter. Electric, electric service will be underspent, but at the end of the day, they'll probably almost counterbalance each other, which puts us at a position on the summary page of ending the year with a $1.18 million deficit as opposed to the $1.02 million deficit that we had budgeted. Brings our fund balance down to 13.08% at the end of the fiscal year. The budget change report is unchanged from last month.
May I have a motion to accept and place on file Ms. Busey's reports? Mr. Jay and Mr. Langenheim. Any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Schwartz.
So is the budget for 2015 based on the projected to be spent, or based on? So it's already taken into account there?
Any other questions? Seeing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll go on to F3. Entertain a motion to amend Resolution Number 8673, establishing fiscal year 2015 non-bargaining employee health insurance contributions, and send this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Mr. James, any second? Mr. Richards? Discussion? Ms. Bucy, do you want to speak briefly to this?
I will speak to this in answer to Ms. Petrie's earlier question. From a perspective on an individual basis, with the contributions that are being made, the monthly premium contribution for employees for single employee coverage will increase by $53.60, and the monthly premium increase for the county will be $21.60. So you can see that the employee is picking up a bigger portion of the increase in the health insurance cost. Probably over about 60% of our employees enrolled in health insurance are enrolled in the single premium. On the family side, the county will pick up a greater burden. So on any of the dependent plans, the county's increase will be $33.40 per month, whereas the employees' increases range from $9.60 to $38.60 per month.
I read your memo, and there were strong efforts made to have those conversations concerning aggregation, and I'm just curious of what your takeaway was from them in relationship to, say, 2016 and 2017. Are those conversations worth continuing, or?
We will continue them. The group that looked seriously at aggregation, which was convened by the RPC this year, has basically not one entity that is from this Champaign County area is going to participate in that, but we determined that we will continue meeting on at least a quarterly basis to continue evaluating those options. And we were looking at a group who had done aggregation already. We have a meeting with Health Alliance next month, and that is a question that we intend to pose to Health Alliance, is would they be interested in creating a pool of all of the local entities here, and what might that mean in terms of benefits and things like that? So the discussion will continue. We're very limited. There is not another provider in this area at this time that can provide the same health insurance coverage that Health Alliance provides. So really, all of us, at this point, are in a position where we need to stay with Health Alliance. The other issue in looking at aggregation is it's basically going self-funded, and when we go self-funded and we have a bad year, and our health insurance fund does not have a significant fund balance at this time, so building that fund balance for a couple of years has also been determined by the Health Insurance Committee to be, should be a priority so that we can hopefully, when we go to self-funded, have some cushion moving into that.
Thank you, Ms. Bucy. And any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Let's move on to the ordinance for refunding the 2005 Series B bonds, which I believe was sent out by email and was made available on the website. I would like a motion to send this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Mr. Langenheim and Mr. Hartke. Comments, questions? And we talked about this at, at the previous Finance Cow, so this is essentially that same issue now brought back in ordinance form. Ms. Schwartz?
I'm in favor of refunding the way it was presented. My concern is about how this long document is structured, and so there is no point going over that now, but I think Ms. Bucy needs to check for us, like on page, oh, there are no page numbers, so unless you want to, yeah, there are several things that, it's not clear, for example, what years are being refunded. I was looking versus the 2005B and the principal, some things don't look consistent, so it's not that I mistrust that, but I just want to make sure we absolutely find, and we're going to refund what we think we're refunding at the conditions we think we are in. I'm not sure that this document represents that, so.
There was a challenge putting this together, which Ms. Bucy will speak to.
Yeah. The challenge is, is that the bond counsel, who we have always worked with, is Kurt Froelich, and he passed recently. So we had to engage new bond counsel, and this is literally a skeletal document at this point. The real document with all of the specifics you will have before the county board meeting, and Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair will also be present at the county board meeting to address any questions or concerns that you have. So I apologize for that, but it's just the best we could do. We had a very short turnaround with the new legal assistance, and so that's part of the reason for that.
Ms. Schwartz?
Is it possible to not have it on consent even if everybody votes for? Okay, yeah, because it's a little too big.
All you got to do is vote no.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. We'll put that off of consent. And we'll move on to item F5, which is the fiscal year 2015 preliminary budget packet. And I will stress again, as I did in my memo, we are making no decisions tonight. This is just an opportunity for Deb to sort of explain where she is and how she got there. So Deb, if you want to have the floor?
Okay, well, first of all, you do have on pages 102 and 103 requests from the nursing home board of directors and from the county facilities committee that come to you, the finance committee of the whole, for consideration. Those are noted in the pages that follow. So on page 104, this is just a summary of where we are and what I believe are the decision points for you to consider, but certainly you may have other items that you want to add to this decision points information. But starting out, the general corporate fund on page 104, at this point, has a structural deficit of $254,564. As you go down, what we have in the budget for facilities projects is a total of $532,610. That maintains a status quo with what was budgeted for facilities for this year. The facilities committee is requesting $800,000, which, if you were to approve, that additional money would obviously add to the deficit. The next item is the Capital Asset Replacement Fund, non-facilities, but all the other items that are taken care of through the Capital Asset Replacement Fund. The budget currently has fully funded, a fully funded recommendation, which means we are funding all future reserves, so that everything that's in the Capital Asset Replacement Fund, if it's scheduled to be replaced in three years and there's nothing there now, one-third of that cost in three years is included in the budget. We have not been able to do this since 2008, so that's how the budget is presented to you. However, if we fund the current needs for next year only, that amount would be $233,044, which is a savings of about $250,000, which could effectively eliminate the deficit in the general corporate fund. After that, you have the request for new funding that you received in the legislative budget hearings, which includes additional assistance for VAC, the coroner deputy, IT disaster recovery system, IT additional desktop support tech, three additional positions for the physical plant. Obviously, funding all of those adds back to the deficit. And then finally, on the revenue side, those are all expenditure decisions to be made. On the revenue side, the nursing home board of directors is requesting that you consider eliminating the transfer from the nursing home to the general corporate fund to cover the $4 million debt service. Currently, that transfer is in the nursing home budget, and it's in the general corporate fund budget. It's in the nursing home budget as an expense and in the general corporate fund budget as revenue. If you eliminate that from the general corporate fund, you would again be adding that amount to the deficit for the general corporate fund. Currently, the nursing home budget is presented to you with about a $250,000 deficit as well, revenue to expenditure. That's all I have on general corporate. Everything else that's included in the general corporate fund has been presented to you in the budget hearings and is based on status quo and decisions that you've made about the budget process for fiscal 2015. On the next page is the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund overview. Currently, the beginning deficit for the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund is $218,319. The Public Safety Sales Tax provides funding for the Capital Asset Replacement Fund for the, some of the criminal justice system offices, the state's attorney's office, the sheriff, the public defender, not the public defender, the coroner, and probation court services. Right now, that, too, is, is presented as fully funded, which is $185,531. If we funded current for next year only, that would drop to $76,080, which is a savings of about $110,000 there off of that structure, off of that budgeted deficit. The second issue is, over the last seven or eight years, the 5% set aside for, for delinquency prevention funding has not been fully spent each year. It has been underspent by $128,000. You are being asked to approve a budget amendment for about $45,000 of that this evening to the fiscal 2014 budget, and so the other $83,251 is included in the delinquency prevention grant funding budget for next year as a carryover to be spent. It's up to you to decide whether or not you want to leave that in there. I would tell you that based on the current contract, you should leave at least $5,000 of it because that commitment has already been made through June 30th of 2014 above what the actual revenue will be from the 5% set aside for fiscal 2015. But the balance of that is a decision point for you to make whether or not you leave it with that funding or leave it in the fund balance. Listed on page 105 are all of the items which are currently included in the Public Safety Sales Tax budget for fiscal 15, just so you are aware of everything that is included, which includes the, you know, Problem Solving Court Coordinator position that we spoke about earlier this evening.
Questions for Ms. Bucy on these decision points? Ms. Schwartz?
So again, the 2015 savings when we refund the bond, wouldn't that cover the deficit?
I couldn't, I would not want to answer that right now. There will be savings, but there are, there are also bond issuance costs, which will be subtracted from some of those initial savings. So I, I would want to, there will be savings, and yes, you could add that back into the fund balance.
I remember when I asked the person who presented about the bond, she said that the issuance cost is actually tacked on to the payments, that she was not going to take it out in the first year. So I might be wrong, we might be talking about two different types of issuance costs, but I remember being worried about it. So anyway, just something to check.
We'll know more, we'll know more as we get closer to the, to the reissue. But yeah, and that would be on, that would be, that would be the general corporate? Because those are, oh, those are, those are public safety bonds, that's right, no, that's right, so that would be the Public Safety Sales Tax. Questions? Okay, we'll be talking more about this as we move forward. There's also, Deb, do you want to mention the levy chart?
Yes, also provided for you the property tax levy rate projection chart for fiscal 2015. You will see that the fund balance, or the EAV is anticipated to drop or decline by half a percent at this point. The CPI allowed under the PTEL calculation is for the levy to increase by 1.5%. But we also have 65 million in new construction and 8.3 million coming out of TIF, which is treated like new construction, which helps us with the calculation for the property tax. So a straight across-the-board calculation results in a 3.83% increase for each levy. However, within the top 10 levies, which are the aggregate levies, we've moved around that levy authority because we levied for IMRF and social security this year for 13 months, and because up till this year, we were also paying for an ERI debt out of IMRF and no longer have to do that. There are substantial savings on the IMRF and social security levies for fiscal 2015. So we have taken what would, what they would have received in growth and actually subtracted from what their levy was this year, and redistributed that to the liability insurance levy, and we talked about this at the, at the, at the legislative budget hearing. We are finally able to balance our levy with our expenses for liability insurance. So there's a $1.7 million deficit in that toward immunity insurance fund right now, but at least it's going to stop getting bigger at this point, so we've stabilized it. And as you also know, that is offset by a healthy fund balance in the self-funded insurance fund, so it, it works fairly well. And now the goal will just be, over time, to gradually eliminate, get that 1.7 million down. And the rest of, the balance of the growth was then appropriated to the general corporate fund so that it actually sees a 7. almost 4% increase.
And we'll mention that, as I asked this question when I first saw that, if we are actually seeing a 7.4% bump in the general corporate levy, why don't we have more money? And the answer is essentially that most of that is subsidizing the fees that we aren't collecting. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, thank you. We will move on to the budget transfers and amendments then. Our first is Budget Amendment 14-32. This is from the Mental Health Board. Increased appropriations of $80,0474 from the fund balance. I'm going to ask for a recommendation to forward this to the full board without recommendation, and I'll explain why in a minute. Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Michaels, thank you. Deb and I have talked about this a couple times, Mr. Tracy could not be here tonight. There is considerable, has been considerable discussion over how this situation arose. The memo does not particularly address this, and in fact, the memo isn't entirely, doesn't say exactly what the budget amendment says in terms of where the money's coming from. So I would like to just kick this down the road to the full board meeting, if that's okay with everybody. Mr. Quisenberry?
Do you want a motion to send it to the board without recommendation?
That's what I think I just got.
I just did that, yes.
Okay. No, we already, we already, I already had it, we already had it.
We moved that already, didn't we?
Yeah, we already had it. Ms. Schwartz, absolutely.
Just a general question, so, I'm in general opposed to voting yes. I mean, I know we're not voting, but for anybody spending money contracting on something they were not supposed to, but can we legally actually do that? I mean, if we have a contract that somebody signed that I'm not interested in paying because he shouldn't have signed it, but he's selling it, so isn't that my responsibility to pay? And if it is, then how do we stop it from ever happening again?
Well, Deb, do you want to tackle that? I mean, the answer is we don't have to approve it. We could not spend, we could not authorize the spending of the money in which case, or authorize the budget amendment, in which case, at some point, the mental health fund will just run out of money and not be able to, not be able to make this payment.
In addition to that, all of their contracts include language that if the funding is not appropriated or made available, then they have an out clause. So it is possible that those contracts would have to deal with the fact that you did not appropriate the spending.
But I think this will be, I think we can have a more useful discussion of this when we get more information and when Mr. Tracy's here. We could also defer this until, to the subsequent Finance Cow, and that may actually be what ends up happening at the full board if, if we don't feel like we're satisfied with it. The, the next one, with regard to the Youth Assessment Center, there's a little more timeliness associated with, because we are concerned that if that doesn't get approved at the full board, we may actually end up stiffing the Youth Assessment Center. This one, we have a little more time flexibility on, so if we're not satisfied with it at full board, we may just send it forward to another cow. Any additional comments, questions, or discussion? All those in favor of sending this to the full board without recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That will go to the full board. And because it is not with recommendation, it will not appear on consent. Next budget amendment, 14-33. This is somewhat similar. This is increased appropriations of $44,851. This is actually from the Public Safety Sales Tax, Delinquency Prevention Grant, the 5% set aside. Again, this is an issue where the current contract does not, the current budget appropriation is not sufficient to cover the contract for a number of reasons. Ms. Bucy, do you want to try to go through the three problems?
On July 1st, 2013, the, the Mental Health Board approved a contract with the Youth Assessment Center utilizing the Public Safety Sales Tax funds in the amount of $240,613. However, there was not that much. However, there was not that much budgeted, there was $228,000 actually budgeted in fiscal year 2013. That contract went into effect on July 1st and for the first five months of that contract, which was the last five months of our fiscal 2013, they underpaid the monthly payments to the tune of $14,801 and moved that obligation to the payments that are being made in fiscal year 2014. So there's $14,801 from 2013 that we're now paying out of fiscal 2014. In addition to that, the contract, both on July 1st, 2013 and the second contract on July 1st, 2014 are for $10,000 more than what was budgeted at 240, we had budgeted in public safety 230. So add that $10,000 for the full fiscal year of our fiscal 2014 for those two contracts. And finally, the 13th month payment was never budgeted for this year, which is $20,051. So the combination of those three things create the need for a budget amendment of $44,852, 44, 848 is what's being asked for in fiscal 2014. As I've said to you earlier, I believe the mental health board was acting under the assumption that these funds were unspent from previous years, so were available to be appropriated. The only problem is they never came to you for the appropriation of the unspent monies from prior years. And so that's what they're doing right now.
So essentially, we're just, I mean, I don't know how to put it, other than we're dealing with some kind of sloppy accounting at the mental health board, which we are trying to get cleaned up. May I have a recommendation to send this to the full board without recommendation? Mr. James and Mr. Mitchell.
Don't you want to?
Doesn't matter, right? Does it matter? Okay, that's fine. I'll entertain a motion to forward it to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Mr. McGuire and Mr. Mitchell, I apologize, I thought the board would want to send this without recommendation. Any additional discussion? Ms. Petrie.
This is just a general comment. I've often on mentioned this, we have liaisons to these various boards and it brings to mind that we need to make better use of our liaisons to the various boards and start integrating some reporting from them back to the county board.
I appreciate your sentiment. I'm not sure any liaisons are going to be studying the books in sufficient depth to catch this type of an issue, but it might help. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a division on that. The ayes, please raise your hand. That's going to, that's going to pass. But it will certainly not be on consent and we will attempt to have Mr. Tracy here and get some more details by the time we have the full board meeting. Next, we'll move on to Budget Amendment 14-34. This is budget neutral, increased appropriations of $21,112, increased revenue of $21,112 reflecting two grants to the county clerk for election assistance and accessibility. May I have a motion to send this to the full board? Mr. Jay and Ms. Michaels. Mr. Hartke.
I, just to be clear, this is grant money from the state and federal government to help us get election equipment?
I believe so. Gordy, do you want to speak to that?
This is additional grant revenue secured through two grant funds. The first is the voter registration state grant, which we budgeted at 20 and we actually got 28,000 from the state government. That is money we turn over to the IT department through the general corp fund to reimburse them for the expense of the programmer analyst they keep on staff, who is largely dedicated to our office. There's an additional $13,000 and change in a VAID grant, V-A-I-D, which is for voter assistance for individuals with disabilities, which specifically has to be used for folks with, to provide increased access to voting opportunities for folks with disabilities. We're using that and the remaining funds in our Help America Vote Act fund, both of which expire with this general election, to secure some new voting booths, about 50 percent of which will be handicap accessible. If you voted in our old canvas booths, you'd know they got some water damage when they restored at the Gil Building and they're sort of not very attractive anymore and we can't find anyone to replace them or clean them. So we've secured some grant money to purchase some new ones. We will hopefully have enough booths to replace everything then in the city of Champaign and Cunningham Township for November's election. And sorry, Mr. Jay, we'll do the outlying areas as we secure more grant funds in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton.
Poor farmers, they always get it.
Mr. Hartke, did that answer your question? Okay, thank you, sir. Any additional comments or questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hey, finally something for consent. And finally, we'll move over to the addendum for Budget Amendment 14-36. Similar, this is $22,996 in grant money received by the sheriff's office and EMA. This is related to reimbursements that we've eventually received for the cleanup effort in Towne and Gifford. Moved by Mr. Esri, seconded by Mr. James. Comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Consent is likely to take me a minute here. I have D1, F, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's not finance, though.
Yeah, it is.
It's not listed under finance, it's listed under other business.
Okay, sorry, nobody tells me anything. We'll move on to item A1 under other business on the addendum. This is approval, requesting approval of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement between the sheriff and Aleos. May I have a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Moved by Mr. Harper, seconded by Mr. Hartke. Any questions or discussion about this item? Good, because to be honest, I'm not all that prepared to discuss it, because I didn't think it was finance. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Do I, is this other one mine too? We'll also have a contract with the administrative office of Illinois Courts, application for 2015 salary reimbursements for the probation and court services department. May I have a motion? Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Schrader. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, so for consent. I have D1, I have F3. I have G3 and 4. And I have 10A1 and 10A2. And I would ask that we keep closed session minutes closed as recommended by the state's attorney. Moved by Ms. Michaels, seconded by Mr. Kurtz. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That carries. That concludes finance.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I emailed those to you. They got put on the agenda.
Okay, I didn't realize those were mine.
Okay, we are at, on no other business. Then I'd like a motion for adjournment, stand. Second, nobody wants to adjourn? Okay, Aaron, all in favor? Aye. We're going home.